I'd like to call this meeting of the Anacortes Planning Commission to order with roll call Ms. Gleickman.
Commissioner Mills.
Here.
Commissioner McCombs.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Stoneman.
Commissioner Jareski.
Here.
Commissioner Courier.
Here.
And we understand that Mr. Stoneman is on his way, so he may come in a few minutes. Have everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? 4:24. Are there any changes? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion? We have to have that on.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Okay, and is there a second?
I second motion to accept the minutes.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of 4:24, 20:24 as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
Abstain.
Okay. One abstention, everybody else in favor. Okay, the minutes are approved. Now we're on to item number three, public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to comment about anything not on the agenda to begin with? And if you would just come up to the podium, state your name and your city, and we will give you three minutes. Come on up.
I'm from McKenzie, Anacortes. This is tangential to the study that's being presented tonight, but I wanted to point out that we should take a quick, a look at that study for the impact that it has on the narrative we've been following about housing and the housing emergency in this area. That a lot of the stuff that I've heard has implied that we could upzone ourselves into solutions, and the state's certainly following that policy and have been mandating upzones and RCWs. And I think that we're really sort of missing the boat if we follow down that line of reasoning instead of looking at the real issues we need to deal with here. And those are largely driven by economics, so many of them are outside of our control. But we certainly have the opportunity to try to encourage development by doing incentives or regulating uses and establishing a consistent regulatory environment that doesn't discourage people from attempting to make developments in our town. I think were we to do that successfully, we'd be filling, filling a lot of apartments in the dense areas of town where they need to be, where there's transit available and services. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We will have an opportunity for a public comment again a little later today as we have some information about the comprehensive plan, and so we'll make sure that we give you opportunity to speak at that time as well. We have no public hearing tonight, item four, so we're on to item five, other business, the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Update Draft Land Capacity Analysis. Mr. Coleman.
Good evening. So tonight has been, we're going to be having a presentation on the much anticipated draft land capacity analysis. Our consultant is trying to log on, and so gonna extend a little bit here as we, we have the option, while we're waiting for him to get here. And our other option would be to move the planning commission procedures up, but we need all members available to do that. So I thought maybe right now I would just give a brief planning department update that we typically do at the end of this process, at the end of these meetings. And there's not a whole lot to report. What I typically report is what's happened for the projects that have come through the planning commission in the past. So on April 24th, the planning commission reviewed the, reviewed a project, a shoreline master program, or shoreline development permit application for the port, and you approved that, and so that would normally be the end of that story for the planning commission, and it kind of is. Somebody has appealed that, so it's going to the city council for a closed hearing appeal. That's how our city code handles appeals of this type of permit. If the planning commission makes the decision, then it goes to the city council for their, for appeal at that level. So that, that shoreline permit is going to be at appeal, I believe, on the 28th for the first part of, for the closed appeal. So there's nothing for the planning commission to do about that. They based it on a procedural thing, so I'm not going to get too much into that, but that'll be on the city council agenda next week. We also reviewed the public participation plan at the, I believe that was the April 24th meeting, and I see that our consultant is now logging on. That we brought to the city council, we brought the planning, the public participation plan to the city council for their approval on Monday night, and they had some questions. They, they wanted to see more about like their role in the schedule and some check-in times, and had some other small comments. So we're bringing it back to them with their modification, their requested modifications, nothing significant related to, you know, what the planning commission had approved. It was more scheduling and, you know, just some other tweaks that they wanted to see. So that is also going to the city council on May 28th. Would normally be on a Monday, but because of Memorial Day, it's being held on Tuesday, the 28th. So that is, that is all I had for the planning department update, and I've killed enough time now for, that our presenter has logged on, and so I'll just give a brief introduction. So getting back to the land capacity analysis discussion, we hired Makers Architecture as our consultant to do, to help update our comprehensive plan and write the new climate element. Our subconsultant is the Leland Group, and with, tonight we have with us Andrew Oliver, who's a member of that consulting team, and he's going to be presenting on the land capacity analysis. Now, the land capacity analysis is a tool that we use to determine, do we have enough land to accommodate our future 20-year projected growth in residence, which also then translates into housing, and also our employment, our future employment. So Andrew's gonna go over the details of the plan. Hopefully you've had a chance to look over it in detail, and what we're going to do is have him give his presentation, and then we'll give the planning commission the opportunity to ask questions and then open it up to the public to ask questions. And I'm kind of letting Andrew Oliver know this too, so he's aware that there'll probably be questions from the planning commission and the public coming about the proposed plan. And that's all I have to say. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Andrew and let him finish his introduction and begin his presentation.
Thanks, John. Hello, everyone. Nice to meet you virtually. I'm Andrew Oliver with Leland Consulting Group. As John said, we're working with Makers on the comprehensive plan. So can everyone hear? Is the sound and video okay? Everybody can? Okay. So I'm gonna run through the deck, which was in your packet, relating to the land capacity analysis results and methodology, and housing needs by income, and that's sort of a requirement, a new requirement, coming from the Department of Commerce. So the first step we did was to just take a look at what's happened recently in Anacortes over the past decade, as far as housing production goes and also commercial development. So this shows residential permits in the past 10 years, and it's broken down by type of house. So you've got single-family homes, townhouses, duplexes as it gets darker, triplexes, and apartments here in orange, and then ADUs in green. And, you know, there has been, as I'm sure you're aware, quite an increase in ADUs and in middle housings, especially, and townhomes over the past few years. 2021 was a big year for housing production. So, but overall, a pretty consistent rate of housing production. This data, I think, may not have gone all the way to the end of 2023. And where were those units? Okay, this shows where those new housing units permits were located in the city. So there's, you know, single-family and new developments up here on Hill, other new subdivisions, but, you know, overall, kind of a scattering around of single-family development on vacant parcels as well. And then here in the commercial, in the C District, you know, in R4, we have the apartment projects. And ADUs are shown in green. They're a little hard to see, scattered mostly here, a lot in Old Town. Then looking at commercial permits, so this shows the square footage of new commercial buildings, which were permitted in the same time period, and these are broken down into kind of bigger categories, hotel, storage, industrial overall, office, commercial, which sort of means, you know, anything else, restaurants, et cetera, whatever, and then mixed use. So that's phenylphthalates there. So there's been, you know, again, a lot of things happening, and looking at these on the map, there's sort of two areas of new commercial development, as you're no doubt aware, here in the commercial area, and then down here on Arch Point Road with some new industrial development. So in order to figure out where new development can take place and how much capacity the city has for new development, the first step is to figure out what parcels are redevelopable and are vacant. And there's a lot of, you know, ways of doing this. We looked at, oh, sorry, we looked at Commerce's methodology, we looked at what the Scotty County Council Governments did last time around, we looked at some other counties nearby in Washington to, to look at what parcels might be considered vacant and redevelopable. I realized that this slide was, is duplicated a little bit later. Sorry, that was my fault in including that slide twice. So, so we'll come back to this. Okay, before we talk about that, I just want to go over the projections here briefly. So these projections come down from the state. There's projections for housing and for jobs over the timeframe of this comprehensive plan through 2045, and those are shown here on the left. So you've got 17,000 people is the population now, and the city is to accommodate an additional 4,900. And with jobs, we have 9,000 or so jobs now, and an additional target of 3,000 jobs. And one thing that's changed since the last comprehensive plan is this new requirement to break down housing units by income bands, and these are, you know, a subset of total units based on the income levels that will be served by those housing units. So this, it's a little bit of a tricky, a tricky concept, but I mean, the idea is basically that in addition to a total number of units, you know, the, there will be a projected need for a wide variety of income ranges of residents moving to Anacortes over the next 20 years, and there's also already needs at various income levels for, you know, people who are currently paying more than they can afford for housing and may need lower incomes of housing, and also, you know, housing that hasn't been built to accommodate past population growth. So there's a lot of factors that play into the calculations on the, you know, from the Department of Commerce, but it results in targets for every city in Washington that look like this. So this is a scale based on the area median income, or AMI, and these are percentages of the median income. So zero to 30% AMI, 30 to 50% AMI, 50 to 80. The median income is around $100 and something thousand dollars in Scotty County. So this shows how many units, you know, are projected for a need, future need in the next 20 years at each of these income levels. And as you can see, there's a large need for low-income housing, middle-income housing. There's also a reasonable expectation of higher-income households moving to Anacortes here in the future. And this green bar represents permanent supportive housing. So there's also targets that the state has set for jurisdictions to allow for emergency housing shelters here and for permanent supportive housing. So that's low-income housing with additional services, be that mental health or substance abuse, et cetera. So this framework is what we're using to compare to the land capacity. And, and happy to answer questions about it later on, we can talk about, about how this is all set up. But I'll move through for now, and then we can discuss. So as, as I mentioned, in order to see where we, you know, are as far as existing land supply and how it matches up with the targets, we've got to look at what's here. And we used three classifications for parcels in Anacortes. First is vacant, which is pretty obvious. Vacant parcels are showing up as the, on the assessor data as having very little value, and they're also, you know, showing up with a status of vacant, or we can see that they're vacant. So we carefully went through and looked at all the vacant parcels, so they're showing here in gray. And then there's two types of parcels that we consider might redevelop in the next 20 years. The first are partially used. So in residential zones, single-family or low-density and medium-density zones, these are parcels that are large enough to be subdivided. So, you know, as in, as you see down here, there's some large parcels in these zones on which you could fit more than one lot. So the assumption is there's the potential for them to accommodate more housing than they currently are by being subdivided without, without tearing down the existing house, but you could add more housing in those lots. So those are shown in yellow. And then there's redevelopable lots. These are, these are classified in two, in two ways. One is that the, the building is of very low value compared to the land, which means that someone could take the building down and put a higher value building on it, maximize the land value. Or these are single-family uses in a denser zone. So a single-family, a lot zoned for single-family that has a single-family home on it, but that you're allowed to build more densely. Those are considered redevelopable. Not that they'll all redevelop, because as you can see, there's a lot of green parcels, but these are just the universe of parcels we're looking at, you know, have the potential, the most likely potential to change. And then, of course, there's critical areas. Those are shown here in a variety of ways. You can see the wetlands here. We have streams and stream buffers in turquoise, and we have habitats of local importance with the green hash and unstable soils here along the coast and elsewhere. So all those critical areas, as defined by the zoning code, are taken out of this, of the parcel acreage whenever they, you know, intersect with the parcel. Okay, so we spent a bunch of time going, going through all these parcels. We worked with the staff to develop the assumptions for these, and that's the first step here in the process. There's a couple other things that we, that we took out, as you saw a few weeks through the methodology. There's, this is a kind of important one, the market and infrastructure reduction factor. So this is basically meant to allow for what may or may not happen over the next 20 years. Obviously, not all those parcels we saw are going to change, and also, you know, there's a lot of other factors at play, like the market may shift. We know now interest rates are high, which is causing development to slow down. Some property owners may not wish to redevelop, and, you know, and so we need to account for, for all of that. So we looked at past development in Anacortes and trends that have been going on to look and see how much, you know, that land may actually redevelop and may not based on, based on past trends. And then we looked at zones with mixed use, and so where you could build residential or commercial. We looked at also past trends, permits, known projects that are on the horizon, and assigned some of the acreage in those zones to residential capacity and some to commercial capacity. And then finally, we have now, you know, a bunch of acreage, and we wanted to see what could happen. So we looked at what's allowed in the zoning code under various, under all the various zones, as far as how densely you could build housing or commercial development, and also we looked at, you know, what has been being built, that past development that I showed you a few slides ago. And we came up with assumptions for, for how densely you could build on this acreage, and that gives us the total capacity. So again, just a reminder that the result of this is a number that shows what the capacity is for new units and jobs in, in the city and how that matches up with the forecast. And finally, before I say the totals, there's one more thing to add, and this is a look at ADUs. Because ADUs are sort of, in addition to the, you know, expected density on a parcel, we looked at them in addition to the other analysis, into the separate analysis here, looking at places where you could fit an ADU. So this just shows simply from the size of the lot, you know, where you might be able to fit an ADU, which is many lots in the city. But of course, not everyone is going to choose to build an ADU. So we started with an assumption that we've been using around, around other cities in the state as well. It came down from the Department of Commerce to look at, you know, an assumption that maybe 5% of owners might choose to build an ADU in the next 20 years. And then we looked at how many ADUs have been built and compared how many ADUs that would be. And it's, it's sort of a, I think it's about a one and a half times increase in the number of ADUs per year. So, you know, as an, as a estimate, assuming people continue to build ADUs at a current rate or maybe slightly faster, you know, we may see something like 350 ADUs in 20 years, at least as far as the capacity analysis goes. So where does this leave us? In a pretty good spot. There's sufficient capacity for housing units, there's sufficient capacity for jobs in the city as it's currently zoned. This shows the targets, again, in, in yellow, 2,942 new housing units, 3,145 new jobs. And this, in the dark blue at the bottom, shows pending units. So these are things which are permitted and not yet built, or have been built since the baseline Commerce data came out in a couple of years ago. Their baseline is 2020. And then in addition to those 295 pending units, there's another 4,000 unit capacity at least on the, on the lots that we, that we calculated. So you've got a surplus of capacity. For jobs, pretty similar. The baseline for job, this is probably overly technical and confusing, but the baseline for jobs is actually 2023, so there aren't pending ones that we have in here. That's why there's a zero there. But, you know, looking at commercial development in the commercial zones, potentially something like ground floor commercial and mixed use, we have the MJB site, and the potential for more industrial development in March Point area, and potentially even at the refinery, there's sufficient capacity to meet the jobs target as well. I will briefly talk about housing needs by income. I know this has been a lot of data, and I don't want to put everyone to sleep, but I think it'd be quicker to just go through three or four more slides, and then we can move on and discuss. So as I mentioned, the House Bill 1220 passed a couple of years ago, this requires cities to show capacity to accommodate breakdown by the income levels that the housing units can serve. And this is essentially done by looking at the zoning of that total housing capacity that we just looked at. So there's, you know, this capacity for 4,000 more units, where does that leave us in terms of zoning? How much of that capacity is in places where you could build lower-income units that could serve, you know, either deeply subsidized units in an apartment, or even market-rate apartments, which, you know, are serving middle-income households? Things like ADUs are also serving middle-income households, and duplexes, triplexes, that's serving households, you know, earning 80 to 120% of the median income. And then, you know, where could you build single-family homes that would serve higher-income households? And how does that line up with the expected need at those various income levels? So the way it essentially works is to, you know, equate zones with the types of housing that you can fit in the zone, and then equate those zones with the income levels. It's, it's, it's a very broad way of looking at this. The methodology is a little bit confusing, but I think as a sort of, you know, statewide attempt to quantify future need, it works relatively well. And the results of this, no, sorry, that's the targets again. Okay, so these are those zone categories, low, moderate, low-rise, mid-rise, you know, based on the zoning, and as I mentioned, the types of housing you can, you can allow in each zone category. And at the end, the Department of Commerce asks that, you know, these are aggregated into three grand totals. I know this is a little bit confusing to look at. Essentially, you have low income, so this is 0 to 30% AMI, 30 to 50, and 50 to 80. So it's all of 0 to 80, all in one. Then you have 80 to 120, all in one, and then 120 plus. So it's, it really equates to low income, you know, moderate income, and high income in these three large boxes here. And, you know, we looked at that total capacity, broke it down into these three buckets based on zoning, and again, you have a surplus in, in each zone. So as far as fulfilling, you know, the Commerce requirement, there don't need to be changes in zoning in Anacortes to, you know, to meet the capacity to build these various units. In other words, there's enough space as zones to build the types of units needed to serve these various income levels. And finally, there are two other parts of this analysis which we're working on now. The first one here is called adequate provisions, excuse me, adequate provisions analysis. So this sort of asks the next question. Okay, you have enough land capacity to build the units at these various income levels. You know, what other things need to happen in order for especially those lower-income units to get built? So it's, it's a look at barrier, you know, potential barriers to production, potential actions the city could take to encourage the affordable housing to be produced. And finally, there's an analysis of racially disparate impacts, which was also required by HB 1220, looking at if there are policies on the books that need to be changed because they have potential disproportionate impacts on communities of color. So we're working on those now, and we'll probably have more on that in the future. But meanwhile, I will stop the presentation for now. We can, of course, look at any slides if we need to later on, but have to take some questions and discuss.
Mr. Oliver, thank you very much for the presentation. I'm sure we will have quite a few, at least I know I have quite a few questions, and I think the rest of us will too. So I'm wondering if we can now just go kind of slowly, step by step, through the slides?
Sure.
So you can maybe pull up your first graph? Residential permit since 2013?
Yes. There we go.
So I see that you've got 1,100 units since 2013, so that's about 114 units. So that's about 114 units a year being built. And I'm wondering how many are in the works this year?
That I need to defer to staff on unless I have it somewhere.
I think Mr. Coleman looks like he's ready to answer.
Okay.
Thank you. So you can see in 2023, we're way down from the average of over 100 per, over this time period, I did the math, we're over 100 units per year. Averaging out, you see 2021, it was, you know, 175 units. But otherwise, the trend was fairly stable right around 100, averaging a little over 100. 2023 with the change in, largely it was driven by real estate professionals here, but interest rates have changed and that changed how people are able to build new houses. So that's affected the development community. 2024, we've, we're seeing a similar trend where permit numbers are down. We've, so we would anticipate close to the 2023 numbers. So I think we might, we might actually be about at what 2023 was now. I don't have that number. But it's not going to, it's not going to bounce back up to 100 unless interest rates change suddenly and the development community decides to jump into action. Now, anecdotally, I can tell you that there are lots of developers that are anticipating to develop but are sitting on sidelines waiting for, waiting for it to be less expensive to borrow money.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else with a question on this one? No? Okay, well, let's keep going. Your next slide looks residential permit since 2013. I think I have questions on that. Hey, let's keep going.
Chairman Martin?
Yes, Mr. Mills.
Question that was in our packet that seemed to relate to the last two graphs, but wasn't in the presentation.
Okay.
Just trying to understand when we say things that are in the pipeline or are in process, we get credit for and working towards that total of 2,900 and some housing units. On page four of our packet, it says that anything starting in 2020 works towards that 2,940 units. But I saw somewhere else in the, in the language that referred to starting in 2021. When it comes to counting towards the 2,100 or 2,900 and some odd housing units, where is the start point? Is it 2020 or 2021?
It is 2021. I will fix that in the document.
It was on page four of the packet that was distributed to us in the text.
Okay. It's 2021, but it is a little bit, as I mentioned, there is a different baseline for the job target. Because when Commerce developed the housing unit targets by income, they used the 2020 baseline due to the census data that they used to determine the income of, income level of existing housing units. So, yeah, it's a little, it's a little confusing. But for housing, it's, the baseline is 2020. So things that were, were built starting in 2021 count towards that target.
All right, I have another question, a simple question. The area median income is 102,800. Is that for one person, for one family?
It's family. The AMI is set by HUD and it's based on a sort of average household size, which is slightly less than two people, I believe. So it's, it's, it's meant to be an adjusted sort of income for, for average family or average household, you know, be that a single person household or a, or a family household.
Okay, so in the 2016, I believe the average household was figured at 2.4 people. And it looks like with 5,000 people coming in and 2,900 units, that's looking at the average household as like 1.6 or 1.7, something like that now. So it's sort of changed.
Yes, well, household size has been going down almost everywhere in Washington. And, but the other reason that the, that it's so small, when you divide those two numbers out, is because the conversion from population projection to housing unit projection takes into account other factors besides just household size. So when, when Commerce developed this new methodology, you know, to take into account the housing needs by income, that there's a tool called the Housing for All Planning Tool. And it basically calculates each jurisdiction's housing unit need based on the assumed future household size, but also adding in an assumption for an increased vacancy rate in the future because vacancy rates are pretty low right now and below what's considered to be healthy for, you know, people's housing choice in the market. Also to account for historic underproduction of housing units and people who are currently experiencing homelessness. So there's a bunch of other factors that sort of equate to additional units that, you know, go beyond just the units that would need to accommodate that population projection. So as a result, when you divide the grand total, it does look like a very small household size. But there's additional considerations taken into the number of units that are being projected to meet the population growth target, you know, in addition to the household size. So I don't think, I think the, I can look up at some point, the future household size in Skagit County, but it won't be 1.6. But it probably is smaller than 2.46 or where it was before. Does that make sense?
Yes. Any other questions on this one? What's your next slide? Commercial permits. Questions on this one?
Okay.
Okay. Let's keep rolling.
Yep, all right, so targets?
All right, I know I have questions on this. What about the rest?
Oh, sorry, apologies for interrupting. I just opened the Commerce file with the spreadsheet with the future household size for Skagit County in 2045. It's 2.41, 2.42. That's the sum.
That's interesting. Okay. Projections. Any questions here? Okay, I'm going to ask some questions.
Sure.
All right. Emergency housing, 48. Where did that come from? Where did the number come from? I know we need emergency housing. I just wonder how the number came about.
Yeah. The number came from that same tool, the Housing Planning for All Tool. So there's a countywide projection that Commerce makes for future emergency housing needs. It, it, it's pretty complicated, but everyone asks about it, so I tried to figure it out. I sound like a Commerce spokesperson now, I think. Essentially, they, they have a big statistical model and it runs something like 10,000 iterations of, you know, statistical analyses of potential future scenarios resulting in the need for emergency housing based on a bunch of data like current homelessness data, data on evictions, data on incarceration rates. I mean, there's a huge amount of stuff they put into this model. And then, so anyway, that generates a countywide number of future emergency housing needs over the next 20 years. And then, similar to the way that, you know, these targets get allocated from the county down to the cities, that each county allocates them down to the cities. And unless I'm mistaken, and the staff might be able to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that Skagit County did a straight allocation of emergency housing. So in other words, the proportion of each city, the proportion of the countywide population that each city, you know, got is the same as the proportion of countywide emergency housing target that each city got.
So in other words, what he's saying is Mount Vernon's much larger than Anacortes, so their emergency housing number is much larger.
Fortunately larger, yeah.
So my question about that is how many emergency housing units do we currently have? That basically it's saying we need 48 more on top of what we currently have. What do we currently have?
Well, fortunately, that's in the same spreadsheet that tells me the future household size. So I'm just pulling up. Okay, estimated supply in Anacortes is 30.
Doesn't seem right.
So emergency, emergency housing is like the nine units at AFC where you can, where one can go in an emergency temporary situation. It's not where somebody, it's not, emergency housing isn't where somebody is intended to live permanently, long term, but it might be a few months as a step program to other housing.
But the family housing, the family center has got, I don't know, 100 or more?
The, the emergency housing, the, their first step program is they're, they're building that they, I think they only have nine units there. I, I, I would have to check with that. But then, you know, other, other type housing in cold weather shelter, that, those sorts of things are what's counted as the emergency housing. It's not, it's not permanent housing. It's to get somebody out in, in a, in a housing emergency into a temporary home as they work through the social services programs to get into, you know, the permanent supported housing or, you know, or just normal housing, non, non-supported.
Would it be like a motel room?
You know, I don't know what the Commerce tool counts as, but it, it actually, yes, that could be one of the things that they use, especially when you talk about like cold weather shelters.
Yeah, I think that, I, I asked Commerce about, about that existing emergency housing number because it has come up in a number of jurisdictions this year, I mean, in the 2044 plans as well. And, you know, there, there's a lot of data that they, they got from sort of service providers and statewide audits of, of where, you know, shelters are located and such, that they sort of aggregated for that. So it's, it, it, it may not be picking everything up, you know. I would take the 30 with a relative grain of salt, but I think they wanted to at least try to establish a baseline, you know, went for it.
Okay, I think we have, Mr. Ryan would like to ask a question? Okay, Mr. Stoneman wants to ask a question.
I, I guess where I thought you were going is if we have 30 now and 48 seems, additional seems excessive based on the population growth. I mean, that's more than doubling it and our population isn't more than doubling. So how does that work?
Yeah, well, I think it, it, it comes from a countywide target of, I know that's, sorry, that's the current. Well, I think it's, it's based on that, on that, you know, Commerce estimation of, of future need. So I, I guess that implies that, that the, you know, that the state is forecasting the need to be greater in the next 20 years than, than happened.
And it is my understanding that some of this is to address a deficit need. So, you know, the, the tool identifies deficit. That's also why you see the numbers at the 0 to 30 and 30 to 50 being so much higher than the rest of the, you know, you know, it's more than, you know, those are the below 50 AMI and they take up more than 50% of the AMI. It's because there is already an identified deficit. And, and the need countywide, these types of housing are taken, are, are, through the Commerce guidance, cities are to take the, the 0 to 30 because we can't provide high, we can't provide those high density housing in counties where rural densities are only allowed. So you can't put a 10-unit Anacortes Family Center type building where they have the, the supported housing. It's just not allowed building type in rural areas. So it's, it's directed to the city. So we pick up that a little bit from the rest of the county, 20% of the population for the county. 20% of future, future population goes to the county. But because the county can't take up, you know, the, you know, couple hundred units or close to 1,000 units in the 0 to 30, those were disseminated to the cities because the county is unable to accommodate that type of housing. So there's a little bit of a bump there and there's a little bit of a bump in the 0 to 30, 31 to 50 because there's a deficit in that area. I think we all can understand that where, where there is a shortage of lower, of more affordable housing. We're well aware of that painful reality.
Well, I guess I want to speak again. I do appreciate that you sent me to this document, Skagit County Population Housing and Employment Growth allocations methodology, published by the Skagit Council of Government. And I did look at what, how these numbers were broken down. And you described 20%, although it looks to me like it's 10%. So the, so what there was, was like a swap that happened. What was allocated to the rural areas were 90% of that, of that number was taken out and distributed amongst the municipalities. And then the same 90% was taken out of the municipalities, 120-plus AMI, and put into the rural. So in order to balance the number up. Am I saying that correctly?
So, yeah, there, there might be a little bit of discrepancy. So the 80/20 split is overall population of the, of, of what's the county is going to take in projections. So 20% of the 2045 population projection goes to the county. Of that 20%, 90% of the 0 to 30 was taken out and reallocated to the city. So that's, that's, that's the difference. That's why there's also this 80% number that, you know, overall the cities take the population and, and 20% of the overall the county takes. But of that 0 to 30% AMI, the county can only accommodate 10% of it. And that's assuming it's going to be like accessory dwelling units that are charging very low rates. So of their, of their allocation for the 0 to 30, 90% was redeseminated amongst the, the cities. So that increased ours by, I think, 300 or so.
Yes.
And then, in order to keep that 80/20 split of population city to county, the cities, each of the city's allocations of the 120 and above was reduced by the equal amount that they were increased at the 0 to 30. And that was then distributed back to the county. Now, in the county, because of the rural setting and the lack of infrastructure and the lack of services, it is assumed that the lack of infrastructure and the lack of services, it is assumed that most of the development in the county is going to be a single-family or manufactured-home-type housing. So those fall in the hundred-and-twenty and above, or, or at least a hundred and above. They have less capacity to accommodate the middle housing types that are traditionally in the zero to thirty, thirty-one to fifty, and fifty-one to eighty percent. So they still have to, they still have to accommodate a, 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 a large amount of that. We didn't let them off the hook there. But we did let them off the hook for the zero, much of the zero to thirty. And so as far as these allocation numbers, what we're talking about, this was done at the Skagit Council of Governments, and I, hopefully it's on our website. If it's not, we'll get it up there.
It is.
The, the document that you're referring to is the Community Attributes Inc., their methodology. That was run through the Skagit Council of Governments process to look at those allocations and approved by the Skagit Council of Governments Growth Management Steering Committee several months ago. And it was from those numbers that each of the jurisdictions now take these housing allocation numbers and population numbers that we're looking at today. That's, that was the first step, and that happened several months ago at the Skagit Council of Governments level.
I appreciate that explanation. Here's, here's my thinking behind that. When I first saw these numbers, and I saw, you know, it was more than sixty-five percent of the increase in the next twenty years going to be in the lowest AMI, it didn't seem to me that it fit with the community that I know and love here. It seemed like a significant shift, which is why I wanted to look and, and see where did those numbers come from, those allocations come from. And I understand it's gone through the Skagit County of Governments, and actually, our mayor has signed a resolution approving these numbers. But since they are the bedrock of everything that we do, it's really important that the community has confidence that these numbers are accurate. And, and I think just explaining the, the ninety percent swap is the best I can say. I mean, I, I was one of those rural zero-to-thirty percent people for many years, not living in a mobile home, but living in a little tiny house for many years. So, you know, poor people can live out in the country. It is possible. But I understand what you're saying about, you know, building the taller and more dense housing. I understand that. But that was my thinking, is it's really important that as a community, we feel confident that this is the direction that we want our community to go.
One thing, you brought up a, a really important point that, that worth mentioning. So yes, there's a lot of affordable housing in, in the rural areas, and the difference with the numbers that we're talking about now is we're talking about new constructed units. So you cannot build a new unit for less than, the, the, you cannot purchase a new single-family home for less than the hundred-and-twenty AMI. So while there is plenty of inexpensive, single-family homes in the county, we can't say that any of the new ones are going to be inexpensive, because just, we know what it costs to build a home, and you can't build a home for low enough amount that anybody that earns less than a hundred-and-twenty percent can actually afford it. Maybe a hundred if you get really lucky and you do it yourself. But, you know, you're not going to get, you're not going to get a lot of single-family homes constructed for under the one-twenty. And that's why the county has, you know, in the rural areas, has a very difficult chance of providing anything besides the one-twenty. And it's a tough pill to swallow, but it's just what we're looking at in new housing construction. So it's an important distinction. So thank you for bringing that up.
Chairman Martin.
Mr. Mills.
Adding on to your line of questioning there, I think I understood the process for the reallocation. But the flip side, the ninety percent that was brought out was all a hundred-and-twenty percent and above AMI?
Yes.
What was the thought process there, rather than distributing it a little more proportionally?
Like I said, they made a very strong argument that, the county made a very strong argument that the only type of housing that they can reliably build is the one-twenty and above because of the cost of building a new single-family home, and because the land use types that are allowed in the rural areas are pretty much single-family home. There's much less allowed duplexes, triplexes, and no multifamily types in, in the county, except for maybe some, what are referred to as lammers, local areas of more intense rural development. But those are very small amounts of land. So the vast majority of the housing types that are allowed to be constructed in the county are in the one-twenty and above AMI. We, we pushed back on that, but...
Perhaps the, the bigger, I was disappointed to find out how this process worked in terms of tops-down allocations, and frustrated that this commission, unless it happened before my time on the, on the commission, didn't have an opportunity to provide comment and ask questions before these numbers are presented to us. And as Chairman Martin said, this is the driver that drives everything. To a large extent, we're now reverse engineering a comp plan update that's being driven by data that we didn't participate in. We're, the, the lyrics are there, we're just adding the music. So it's a little bit frustrating, and I'll bust my ass to make it work, but it is frustrating. Just wanted to get that out there.
I, I think it's all, sorry, can I interrupt?
Yes.
Was there another commissioner who wanted to speak? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
Yes, who is, but go ahead.
Oh, no, oh, well, why don't, why don't you finish it? I'm sorry, I didn't, I can't quite see that clearly on the screen. So go ahead, sorry.
Okay, Mr. Ryan.
Yeah, Mr. Coleman, are we gonna, during this whole, we call them the Planted Cordis, right? But anyways, are we going to be working with the county during some of, of this while we go, how are they going to make changes while we're trying to accommodate some of these numbers that they're going to push over on us and vice versa? Are, are they going to be making changes as well and working, you know, in the areas that'll directly affect Anacortes?
So, no. Now that we have our allocations, we're doing our citywide, trying to figure out how we're going to accommodate our population growth. The county's doing the same at their level. If we determine that we need to expand our urban growth area for any reason, and this land capacity analysis is the keystone to making that determination, we'll be checking in with the council on this land capacity analysis next. And then they'll be identifying if there's any policy changes that they want to direct that might require us to expand our urban growth area. If we need to expand our urban growth area, then we will have to bring in application to the county requesting to expand our urban growth area, telling them why we need to do so, where we intend to do so, and how we intend to provide future services to an area outside of the city limits. That's part of the planned growth of, of our boundaries, long-term growth. And for, for those new, new to comprehensive planning, our urban growth area is, is a county jurisdiction land outside of city limits into which we plan to grow. We can annex the urban growth area, but we cannot annex land outside of an urban growth area. So if we ever intend to grow, this is the process by which we do so. We plan to expand our, our city boundaries now and identify, you know, why we need to do so. And then, once it's, once land's in our urban growth area, people that are in the, that own land in that area can then petition the city to be annexed. People outside of the urban growth area cannot petition the city to be annexed.
And so from a land use perspective, given this report, there is no need to expand the urban growth area, at least from that perspective. Am I correct?
So council can still have, council and planning commission and the community still have a lot to say about how our future land use is. So what this document, this land capacity analysis is saying, that given our existing zoning, our existing land use patterns, and our projected population, all things being equal, under many of the assumptions that you see that have been made, you know, units per acre density particular, then no, we, we don't need to expand our urban growth area. However, if there, there are other reasons where we might want to change our zoning patterns, and that might necessitate us to expand our urban growth area still. So this does not say, no, we don't need to expand our urban growth area. But what it says is, under, under the current sacred stances and the current assumptions made in this document, we don't need to. But that, that it doesn't put an end to the possibility of us expanding our urban growth area if we want to do other land use changes. And we do intend to request that the county include areas of the ACFL that are not currently in the city limits in our urban growth area, so we can then annex those. But that would be non-growth area. I feel like it's not areas where we would be accommodating anything besides parkland. So we do know that we are going to be asking for that.
So, one more time, so the AS- A-C-F, whatever it is.
Anacortes Community Forest Land, so that's parklands.
Right.
That we own, that's not in city limits.
Okay.
Some areas down south of Hart Lake, I think.
They're not in the city limits and not in the urban growth area, but we're still going, or you're saying we are going to ask that that be included in the city limits?
Yeah, we're going to ask that that be included in the urban growth area, so then we can annex it into the city limits, because it's city-owned land, we'd like to have control over its destiny. That's not saying that we're going to use that land for future development.
No.
We just, you know, it's our city parkland, and so we'd like to have it in city limits.
So that's been decided?
That's something that the city council has requested.
I did hear-
Which is a very solid ask.
Yeah.
And I can't imagine the county pushing back on that one.
I did hear one city council member ask for that, yes.
Chairman Chair?
Yes.
Question for, for John Coleman. If, if, if you annex part, part of the county for new urban growth area, the existing homes would not, would not count towards your, your new construction required here, right?
Well, I think, Andrew, do you want me, you want to field that one, or do you want me to take it?
Well, these, these targets are for the, for the UGA anyway. So I, I think-
They are or are not?
They are.
I understa- I didn't understand what he said.
No.
Oh, sorry. These, these targets are, include the, the current existing UGA boundary, but I don't, I'm not sure about the new, if you were to annex outside or add land to the UGA. I mean, for the purposes of this plan, any annexation would occur after this plan is adopted. So like the director was saying, you know, this, this sets the stage for potential future annexation, you know, within the framework of the comprehensive plan. But, but units that, that are outside the UGA or the city now wouldn't be counted in, in the projections for this plan, because the, because this analysis is intended to look at what the capacity is currently.
I guess, my question really is, if, if we were to annex part of the county, and there's a hundred existing homes on that part of the county, those hundred existing homes would not, so, those are, those would not be new homes that are going to help the housing problem, right? Those are just-
So Andrew, Andrew was a little, little confused as to what you were asking.
I'm sorry, yeah.
So what you're asking is, if something is, if homes are currently in our existing urban growth area, yes, they are counted as in this, everything in our existing city limits and everything in our existing urban growth area are included in this land capacity analysis. And the, the reason for that is, the urban growth area is part of our future planned growth area. So we've always anticipated growing into that area. It is, that is our plan for how we accommodate our future growth. So it is our plan to grow into our urban growth area and eventually annex those areas over the next twenty, over the next twenty years. Now, the question is, he, I think Andrew was trying to answer, if we, if we add additional land to our urban growth area, that is not counted in here, because we don't know where that land would be. We're just, this is just studying our existing current city limits and our existing urban growth area. And it takes into account all of the houses in that area and assumes that the, yes, they would be part of our population.
Okay. I, I, I think my question's a little more nuanced than that. And it's really, by the city expanding and annexing new, new area, urban growth area into the county, that those, those existing houses there that you would, would now become part of the city urban growth area, those are not, those are not really, those are not helping you with the quota of housing that you still need to provide, right? So even though the city's expanding, taking on more of a, a burden to, to provide infrastructure for those homes, those aren't necessarily-
So if we were to expand our urban growth area, we would identify the property owners and work with the property owners and, and look at how many residents are in that area. And yes, we would take into account the number of residences in that area or commercial uses. This plan right, this document right now is saying we potentially don't need to expand our urban growth area, so it's a bit of a moot point. It's probably worth mentioning that we do have an, we do have a request from a property owner just south of the city-owned Sharps Corner Properties, that's Cimatar Ranch, is that how you pronounce that? They've requested to include about a hundred-and-twenty acres of, about roughly that, we're not entirely sure of the figure offhand without looking it up. They've requested to include their property into the urban growth area. So we'll be talking about that with, with the council, about whether or not we need to do that in the upcoming months.
Quick question about that. So if a property owner like this wants to come into the city, is there any provision for infrastructure? Is there a fee that they pay? Is there something that they do? I know in the past that a development would need to give in-kind land for a school to be built. That's my frame of reference. Would that happen in this kind of a situation?
So all development pays for expanding their, the facilities to them. So if there needs to be sewer brought out to a piece of land, even if it's a city limits and there's no sewer available, the, the developer is on the hook for bringing that to, bringing the sewer to the area. They're on the hook for bringing the other utilities, they're on the hook for building the roads. And so development pays for new infrastructure like that. We also collect impact fees, which may or may, which, which are used to pay for sewer, well, sewer connection charges are not impact fees, but, you know, every new house pays a sewer impact fee, every new house pays a traffic impact fee, every new house pays a transportation impact fee. So new development pays into the system for new infrastructure development, and they also pay for develop, they're like actually bringing a lot of the infrastructure to their own property. As the school question's a little tricky, we- As the school question's a little tricky, we, Anacortes School District does not have a school impact fee, and unless a development is extremely large, it's unlikely that they would give land necessary for a new school. But that definitely is on the table. That's usually handled through like, an annexation agreement, or a developer's agreement, or the State Environmental Policy Act, SEPA process. But it would be pretty large, larger than anything that we could envision that would require school and.
Thank you. I think the answer was a yes. So, that's good. Okay.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Mr. Courier.
Yeah, I was just curious if I could get a little more clarity about the potential MJB site, and I know those units it looks like were excluded. Is there any event that's likely that would change that over the course of the planning process?
Yes, those were not excluded.
They weren't?
No, we just put them in a different color, because there have been, well, there's been several plans and, you know, proposals for that site. We developed an assumption based on the latest traffic impact analysis that was conducted for how many units and jobs there might be there, and then we used that actual number, rather than looking at like, what the acreage is and what the density would be. So, we were trying to sort of, you know, more accurately account for what's likely to happen there. And the number was 414 units and 53 jobs.
Okay, I misread that. Thank you.
Mr. Ryan.
Yeah, Mr. Coleman, my question is, if some of these properties, if we annex those in, is that what we would consider it? Or they, anyways, they join the city, would we be taking those larger parcels and giving them the opportunity to break it down by changing the zoning on them? And then that would allow us more homes in those areas?
So, when lands included in the urban growth area, we designate the future land designation. So, when, because we're doing the planning process, we're identifying where we want certain types of land. Our urban growth area right now, and correct me if I'm wrong, Libby, is 0% for residential purposes. It's all light manufacturing, industrial, commercial, in the, is that the Padilla Heights area, you know, west, east of Sharps Corner, heading out towards the bridges. That's largely where our urban growth area is, and so there's very little residential capacity in the urban growth area, if any.
Yeah, it's shown here in a dotted line, so your refinery, these areas down here.
Okay, I think we're letting it all soak in here. So, questions on this, oh.
Oh, sorry. This is where we left it, yeah.
That is where we left off. Just an observation, looks like jobs are going to increase by 33% in 20 years. Should be, that's great news, if that is true. Okay. Mr. Dretzke says, as long as they're not all leaving town at the same time. Well, we want them to stay, that's for sure. All right, let's look at the next slide.
Okay.
Okay. Questions about this one? Mr. Ryan.
So, I know over here in March's Point, and it, I don't know if I would ever care to want to live in that area, but as a redevelop, redevelopable area, would that be an area where we might be able to accommodate, you know, additional housing of manufactured homes? Or something that would be, to accommodate for, like RV, RV lots, especially since we do have a big turnover at the refinery, maybe temporary or long-term?
There is some parcels down here that have some residential already, I remember we looked at. There's also a lot of wetlands, so that probably reduces the capacity, but yeah, I don't know if staff have thoughts on that.
So, every, again, everything east of the golf course is going to be some sort of industrial, commercial, manufacturing area. There's not envisioned for residential, because of, you know, under Euclidean zoning, we don't generally include residential uses along with heavy impacts, such as, you know, March's Point is heavy, is not in the city limits, it's the refineries. There's no chance of any residential being out there. There's very little chance that they'll ever want to annex in too. But like, everything south of March's Point, that's going to be light manufacturing and other manufacturing type uses that is less compatible with residential, so we don't anticipate any residential growth in that area. And I think Andrew can speak better to this, the, you know, in those areas, we accounted for zero residential growth because of the existing land use.
Yeah, it was based on the existing land use. Yeah, there are some non-conforming residential uses, as I, as we noted, but yeah, we didn't account for that down there.
Question from Mr. Coleman, where exactly was the property that the company came out to the senior center and wanted to build some apartments or townhomes? It's somewhere in there?
That's on the city-owned Sharps Corner Property, so that's west of the Sharps Corner, behind the market, yeah, behind the mini store and coffee shop. Old Brook Road and South Fidalgo Bay Road.
Okay.
Yeah, we have accounted for residential capacity here, because it's our, or R4A, I don't remember which one, zoning down in the Sharps Corner area.
In that area, we definitely have zoned for higher density, the city owns much of it. And, you know, we're going to be working on a plan for how we're going to accommodate growth in that, in that area, specifically looking at that on our city-owned property, what is the potential? And that's something that I'll be bringing to council in the, probably in several months.
Okay, thanks. All right, let's keep going. Oh, sorry, Mr. Mills.
Follow-up question, probably for Mr. Oliver. In the data that we're looking at in our packet, how has the city-owned land been utilized? Is it assuming that they're available for development, or is it not part of the calculation?
Yeah, for example, those parcels are down there in March, in Sharps Corner. The only city or like port or other owned land that we excluded were things that, you know, specifically aren't developable, if it's some sort of easement, you know, or right-of-way, or active marine use, and there might have been a couple others. But if it's a publicly owned parcel that, you know, has potential, I believe we include that.
Thank you. With the exception of parks, of course.
Yeah, yes, of course, oh, yes. Parks and schools, and yeah, and anything that has a, you know, anything that has a current use that is expected to continue.
Okay, let's keep going.
Okay. Yes, across this slide.
Anybody have questions on that one?
I'm trying to get a question in on the slide before that.
Okay.
Going back to the Sharps Corner area. I know PUD water runs by there, but there's no sewer out there. PUD water runs out there, but the city water doesn't go out there. There's no, I'm sure there's no city sewer out there, is there? How would that, that would be awfully expensive, I would think, to bring city sewer service to that property.
From what I understand, there is sewer available, but in limited capacity, and, you know, with any new development, we would study the ability of the land to, of the services to be provided, and new development pays for improvements to, the necessary improvements to the infrastructure.
But then that goes to the heart of feasibility. I mean, for anybody to want, for anybody to want to develop that, that feasibility study would have to say that it, there's enough, there's enough service there to make it worthwhile.
Possibly, yeah, and we're going to be studying that, and it's city-owned property, so that we're going to, we're going to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, let's keep.
Okay.
I don't see any hands. I think no questions on this one.
Next is ADUs.
Questions about the ADUs? Mr. Ryan.
So, Mr. Coleman, do we have a minimum requirement of permeable surfaces on a lot in a residential area?
Did you mean maximum?
Yes. Well, I mean, so, I now understand that in some municipalities, there's a requirement for permeable surfaces, so like, hey, you can't have this concrete here, instead it needs to be porous, so you have to have porous surfaces. And with the ADUs being a non-permeable surface, would that affect those requirements, or does ADUs just, that's an exemption?
Yes, so there are minimum requirements for landscaped area, which essentially do permeable surfaces. There are also maximum land coverage allowances, so the maximum area that can be covered by buildings on a property. And accessory dwelling units are currently subject, they have to meet those, those requirements.
Dretzke.
With the changes in the law mandated by Olympia, have you seen an increase in permit requests for ADUs?
Not discernibly, no.
All right, Mr. Oliver, let's keep going.
All right.
Chairman Martin.
Mr. Mills.
Still on the graph showing the ADUs.
Back to the ADU.
I'm assuming it's not referenced in the table, but apparently the yellow is the lots that would be potential for ADUs?
Yeah, sorry, I forgot to put it in the key. Yes.
And I realize the assumption of 5% is more important, almost, than, given the relative size of the yellow areas.
Yes.
But if we were trying to refine this, I think we would need to take a look at developability of geological aspects. I see several places along the shoreline and along State Route 20, where the slope, for instance, is either going to be a geological challenge, or unbuildable, or in protected territory, where the lot may be big enough for an ADU, but if you take away from the lot, the portion that is practical to be built on, you would lose that lot as a potential ADU lot, I believe.
Yeah, this, you're right, that this could probably be refined a little more. I think the sort of, you know, idea behind the 5% is that it's such a small number that it would sort of, you know, account for all that. We could do a more thorough analysis, but again, this was really just to look at capacity, you know, for the purposes of adding some number of ADUs on existing lots, that sort of was in line with what has been happening. And so, yeah, it's true that there's likely numerous lots shown here that probably would be somewhat unfeasible, for whatever reason, to build an ADU on, including some of these larger ones too, if they subdivide or whatever, but, and they could accommodate multiple ones. But, you know, we didn't look at that either. So, you know, we could refine this a little more. My sort of hunch is that it would substantially change the number, maybe down a little bit. But I think, because we're mostly looking at capacity, and, you know, what's more important is that this number is not too large. In other words, I think the thing that is cautioned against in the conference guidance is sort of the opposite problem, where you would try to count all of these towards your capacity. But we can look at some more stringent, you know, requirements, say we could just take out any parcel that has critical areas.
So, actually, I would caution against that, because, you know, that's coming, this discussion is coming from the assumption that an ADU is detached. There's, there's an opportunity for ADUs to be within existing buildings, so you wouldn't be adding any square footage at all, potentially. So, I don't know that it's worth our while looking at too far down that rabbit hole. I think Mr. Oliver's point to, you know, only 5% is assumed anyway, kind of takes up a lot of that slack. 5% is a very small number of the potential area.
Yeah, I agree. That was my first comment, that the 5% is more sensitive than to the definition of whether or not a lot is capable. And I just pointing that out from a concern that citizens looking at this map and seeing all that yellow going, oh my gosh, my neighborhood's going to be full of ADUs, and it kind of sends a message that really isn't real.
I appreciate you bringing that up, because that was my initial reaction as well, is like, okay, people are going to see this and think that ADUs are going to go everywhere throughout the city, and this is just showing where we believe ADUs could potentially go under our current zoning regulations, but we're only assuming 5%. I'd also like to point out that, you know, under this scenario, we're assuming that this translates to a roughly 18 new ADUs per year, while compared to what we've been seeing since 2019 is 10.8, we'll round that up to 11. So, it would be a modest increase, it would definitely be an increase, but a fairly modest increase in the number of ADUs. So, the point in it is that it's, we're not trying to say that all, we're going to solve all of our ills by, population ills by just allowing more ADUs. We're being respectful of how the community really wants to see them, see ADUs be implemented, as well as the reality of, you know, we haven't seen, you know, more than an average of 11 a year. So, this is pretty much in line with what we've been seeing.
Okay, thank you, let's move on. Question about this slide. Just to, I have, just to clarify, this 295 down in the blue, the pending, that's since 2020?
Well, yes, since 2021, as we talked about earlier. So, you know, the baseline is 2020, so anything since then, i.e. starting in 2021, is captured in the 295.
Okay. Keep going, it looks like. No questions? Keep going. Question just on the last bullet. Would you please define BIPOC?
Oh, yes, Black Indigenous and People of Color.
Thank you. Anything else? No? Okay.
We've seen this before.
Yep.
Zone categories.
Nothing? Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Oliver, we appreciate you taking the time to explain things to us.
Lot of problems.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman, for explaining things to us as well. Anything else from the commissioners? Okay, Mr. Ryan has a question for Mr. Coleman.
Yeah, Mr. Coleman, how much have the new energy codes impacted the cost of building a standard residential home?
There's no consensus on that. Some, you know, been to the building industry, people will say some numbers, and housing industry, you know, housing advocates will give different numbers. So, we don't track that as a building department, and so I can't give you a solid number. Plus, it's only gone into effect a couple of months ago, so it's too soon to really tell.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess I promised that anybody in the audience would like to ask some questions, make some comments, you're welcome to do that. Give you three minutes. Give you a hand. Come on up to the microphone, just state your name and your city.
The name of a court, Anacortes. What does racial disparate impact mean in this plan? What does racial disparate impact mean in this plan?
Thanks for the question. racially disparate impacts are essentially, the state is asking cities to look at potential impacts that result from historic land use practices. So, for example, you know, it was common in, in many parts of Washington in various, at various times in the past for parcel covenants or deeds to restrict the ownership of certain housing units or parcels to people of a certain race. These things are not enforceable anymore, of course, because of the Supreme Court. And, but, but a lot of these, you know, this type of language still exists in, in the record. So that's the type of historic, of historic impacts that, you know, had disproportionate effect on, on non-white residents of these cities. And also, there's, you know, there's, there's sort of knock-on effects of things like redlining. So that was another process that took place whereby it was more difficult for non-white potential homeowners to be able to buy, to be able to get a mortgage. So, so these things have had effects over time, even though these policies are illegal now and not in place. They've, you know, caused people generationally to have less access to housing ownership, for example. So those are the type of things that the state is asking that cities take a look and see if, if those impacts exist. If you look at existing data on, for example, incomes or, or other, you know, educational attainment by race in the community, if there may be, you know, disparities there and if they're related to these type of historical land use. And then, you know, looking at any sort of vestiges of that that might be left in policy. So that's, that's sort of the framework of the racially disparate impacts analysis. It's essentially looking at the existing policies in, in the Anacortes Comprehensive Plan as we look towards updating those policies to see if, if any of that, those impacts need to be further addressed. Looks like.
Thank you. I see another hand, or it might be the same hand. I can't see.
Can you translate that into practical, what happens to a city like Anacortes? What impact does it have here? Because those are all interesting comments. What does it mean?
I think it means mostly that, that there may be, you know, the potential for lower-income residents or residents of color to have less access to, to housing, to homeownership, to certain opportunities. And so I think the state is mostly asking cities to look at their current land use and see if any current policies, you know, may be furthering the, the lack of access to housing. So, for example, there's been a large push towards increasing density in single-family neighborhoods statewide with things like we were just talking about, allowing more ADUs. Now, cities are required, for example, to allow two ADUs per lot. In, in larger cities, there's also more requirements to allow things like duplexes and triflexes and quadplexes on, on a single lot. And Anacortes does allow a fair amount of middle housing, as we saw, and a lot of it is getting built. So middle housing is, is tied to this because, you know, if families or residents of color have had, you know, unequal access to wealth building over time, therefore, more difficult for them to buy a house because of this type of historic land use regulation in the past. Some of these other housing forms, you know, such as duplexes, can provide opportunities for those residents to be able to purchase housing or live in housing in desirable neighborhoods, et cetera, that, that may not have, that, that may not be as easy if it were just single-family housing. So it translates a little bit into zoning, into allowing a diversity of housing types to accommodate, you know, these various income levels that we've been talking about. And also, there's a, a couple of other requirements. For example, if a city has a bunch of areas that have these racially exclusive covenants or have had them in the past, the, the city is, is required to allow, you know, the same types of housing density that, that are allowed elsewhere. So in other words, it can't continue to allow, you know, restrictive housing policy in that area. That, that's not the case in Anacortes, but we've seen that in some other United States. So it's, it's a lot around policy and a little bit around zoning, in short.
Okay. Well, Mr. Oliver, thank you very much for taking your time, being with us. I don't see other hands, and I don't see other hands here. So I think that we will move on to the next item on our agenda. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Nice to be with you all.
Okay. Last item on our agenda is planning commission procedures. And this, this could get tedious, working as a whole committee to do paperwork, but we'll see how this goes. Mr. Coleman?
Well, this, what's in front of you tonight is draft planning commission procedures. And so this helps define how the planning commission works together and the, the process by which you follow to, to conduct your meetings sort of more detailed than what's in the, and more tailored to this body than the, the full Roberts Rule of Orders, but you still follow, but fall under the Roberts Rule of Orders. So these rules of procedure, we drafted based on various other jurisdictions throughout the, the state that our legal department found nice and helpful. And planning staff went over it and included things that we thought were helpful also. And so we presented this to the planning commission to review. We were not anticipating the planning commission to have significant change requests, but that is the case if you look at Chairman Martin's suggested changes. So, yes, it looks like it could get a little tedious as you go back and forth and try to figure out what, how you'd like to say it. We'll be here, staff, to, to guide you and, and put some bounds on it. I think there probably are. I haven't reviewed Commissioner Martin's in detail. I can't say, you know, whether there's anything that's, you know, out of bounds there. But we'll, we'll, we'll try to keep you in bounds. But, yeah, this is your opportunity to hash out the details and warm up for, warm up for trying to, you know, work with, you know, the comp plan as the hundreds of people come to you with ideas, suggestions, and comments. You got to work it through yourselves to, to come up with a recommendation. So here's a practice round for your own rules.
Okay. So I've been thinking about what do we do and how do we do this as a whole committee? But I'm open to suggestions. Good. Mr. Mills?
I'll start with an apology. I marked up the copy that had been distributed previously and didn't until late this afternoon realize that the copy in our packet with the line-outs and stuff was a redraft. So my comments, which I have quite a few, are unfortunately not directed to, but I understand you redrafted.
The one with the lines and the under, and the crossouts and the lines is mine.
Yeah. And I, and I put all my ideas on the other one.
Okay.
So we're going to have a melding process. I don't know how many other commissioners have significant thoughts on it, but I had quite a few to, a lot of them not that material, but just to clean it up so that, put our best foot forward.
So one idea, just one idea, would be to go through page by page. Do you like this or do you like that? Kind of thing, if you want to do that. Another idea might be to just table it for now and look over everything and then come with a, I like this, I don't like that. So we don't have to go line by line. But in the redraft I've put out, I also have some yellow highlights that are just questions in there. Do we need this? Is this important? Those kind of questions. So what is your pleasure? Mr. Drudsky?
Do we need the mics on?
Yes, we need the mics on.
Mr. Coleman, do you know what we're going to be seeing in about two weeks? Is it going to be a minimal agenda so that we could do this for an hour and not all fall asleep, some of us fall asleep up here? As of today, we don't have anything on the first meeting in June. First planning commission meeting in June. I'm checking my calendar here. That would be the 12th of June. I mean, whether you sit, whether you sit here now for an hour and hash it out or you come another night with that the only thing on the agenda and hash it out for an hour is kind of up to you. The, the idea of reviewing the two drafts that have been provided and, and everybody mixing and matching, that's another thing. It might be worth asking some of the questions that you had tonight, since we're here with everybody's attendance. And maybe we can at least address those.
That would be easy enough. Is that okay with the rest of you? In addition, I think the, the main, really, I didn't change a whole lot, but I did wanted to say I did use three things. I found online the city of Covington had a planning commission handbook that I thought was really well done, although many more pages, and I like the shorter pages. I also used Institute for Local Government Planning Commissioners' role. And I also used for the beginning, Mr. Coleman's Planning Under the Growth Management Act PowerPoint, where he talked about the planning commissioner's role, because I thought that was good. And, and the very first thing was whether we have a mission statement. In the original, we have a mission statement. And you see in a suggestion is to not have a mission statement. And I'm generally very much in favor of mission statements, but it didn't seem to me to make sense for the planning commission. And as I looked in these other documents, I didn't find a mission statement there, but I did have, find something specific about the roles of the planning commission. And in fact, what you see in the rewrite is 100%, I believe, from the Covington. I think it's right, taken right from here. So that would be the first question. Do you think we need a mission statement? If so, is the mission statement here agreeable to you? Or do you, would you like to take away a mission statement? That would be kind of the most substantive change, I think.
After, if I may, after reviewing the, you know, the primary mission of the planning commission and just thoroughly review and refine the city's comprehensive plan and development regulations in order to ensure that growth, Anacortes will bring us what the community has decided is the vision for the city. I don't know, this is less of a vision statement as much as like a mission layer. I mean, like, I guess it is a mission statement. It's, it's why you, what is the purpose of the planning commission?
But I guess my pushback is the, the comprehensive plan is definitely the most important thing right now, but it's every 10 years or 20 years.
The mission should be over in a year.
Yeah.
Well, you, the planning commission will review a comprehensive plan annually. There, you know, annually, you, you may be making updates to the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is the, your biggest, the biggest thing that the planning commission does is help set that policy, make recommendations on the policy. Just because the comprehensive plan is just really, in the planning department's eyes at least, the most important document in the city. And then the development regulations come from the planning, from that comprehensive plan. So that, that's what I was, what we were trying to achieve with that.
Understood. And if you look in the other one, it says the planning commission is taxed with considering the long-term growth and development of the community. Commissioners also consider the impact of land use decisions on community livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. Goes on from there. But I think that's how, that's another way of addressing the comprehensive plan.
So you were just reading the, your suggested edits?
Pardon?
You were just reading from your suggested edits?
Yeah.
Should be called responsibility then rather than mission.
Right. That's, that's why we called it roles instead of mission. It's up to you.
Doesn't, doesn't our, our mission, our objectives, our goals, doesn't that come from the city and the city council? So for us to define that as a, as a commission seems like a self-licking ice cream cone to me a little bit. Like, we, we are, we are here to serve a role and serve the city. I think they, you know, they, we, they should be the one that tell, tell us what, what that role is, right?
Yeah, my, my, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was troubled by that first three paragraphs titled mission statement. In my notes and markup, I kind of reversed the order, since the comp plan is an official review. That's a big, big review. It's only two years out of the 10-year cycle. But I thought that the third paragraph actually started out better and just said, "The planning commission shall carry out the responsibilities designated by ordinance and other duties assigned by the city council," blah, blah, blah. That is more of an umbrella statement. And then you could follow it with the public hearing paragraph and a reworked language on the comp plan, which perhaps is what you did in your rewrite.
It is. Yeah. Well, why don't we do this? Let's come back whenever we decide that we're doing this again. Make your mind up which one you like, and we'll be ready to say, pick this one or pick that one. And if we have to tweak a little one way or another, let's tweak, we can, yeah, we can do that. All right, let's.
I have a quick question too. Like, it feels a little, I feel a little uncomfortable with changing it as well, just because we're kind of, we're like, exactly what you said. It's like, we're here serving a function, but I don't know how much leeway, John, your thoughts are on this that we do have. Is it's, like, if the city attorney's gone through and done this, and we're here at the, you know, basically at the service of the city council, it feels weird to redefine our own role. But I, I mean, I get where you're going with it, but I guess just getting clarity around that.
So if it helps, there's, on the planning commission page, you know, describing the planning commission, the planning commission is one of the most important groups in local government as they help set long-term direction or vision for the community. The planning commission assists in the initial development and amendment of the comprehensive plan, the development regulations, and other city plans through review, public hearings, community input, and make recommendations to the city council. The commission reviews certain development proposals for conformity with applicable plans, rules, and regulations. The planning commission also holds public hearings, makes recommendations to the city council, or makes final decisions for certain types of applications. So that's, you know, at least how our website defines it. I looked in the AMC, and it doesn't necessarily specify, you know, the, the role as much as, as this does. But, you know, you're here to make recommendations to the city council. The city council makes the decisions. And I know, you know, they, they like to give some feedback to you to, so you understand. So, you know, the planning commission understands what the city council's ultimate intent is. So, you know, the planning commission understands what the city council's ultimate intent is, not to tell you what to do and, or to micromanage you, but just for simplicity of when it comes to the city council, if you're on a totally different page than them, then, you know, they may not accept your recommendation. So while city council does influence your decision-making process, you know, you are your own independent body.
So if you would just, everybody just read those two and, and look on the website. I think that's a good suggestion as well. Also, quorum. In the original, I didn't see anything about a quorum. I thought that was important to put in there.
Yeah, that would be an omission if that wasn't in there.
Yeah, right. Okay, so then, on page, mine says page three, the first yellow, under election of officers. Have you got it?
Yep. Two, two.
Well, two, three, B, election of officers. Officers, I put are elected instead of must be appointed. I think throughout, officers must be appointed or officers are elected each year at the planning commission's first regular meeting of the year. This is or must be done by nomination and voting of the commissioners. Nominations are made by members. Members do not nominate themselves unless no nominations are made. And so my question is, do we need the second sentence? Do we need that this is or must be done by nomination and voting of the commissioners, since it's a commissioners handbook?
I think it provides clarity.
Okay.
It might be more verbose than...
Yeah.
Than, you know, somebody who is thinking about it, but it doesn't hurt.
Yeah, well, when they're elected, the point of being elected, or appointed, actually, I think they're actually elected. They're not really, we're not really appointed by each other. We're elected by each other. So if you want to leave the sentence in there, that's fine. I don't care. Yeah, we don't care. Okay? Meetings, number three G. My suggestion is leave this three G out altogether. The planning commission may devote part of its meeting to an informal study session during which no comments from the public will be permitted unless the chair or a majority on a case-by-case basis decides otherwise. Is there a reason that we need to have that in there?
Chairman, I'd also point out that I'm not sure it's in conflict with, but it's at least redundant with four, sorry, five A, which refers to an informal study session.
True.
So if we leave it in, we need to be consistent in our language, at least.
I think we need to take that one out.
I can, I can give you some guideline, guidance on what this is about. So this, I think, is intending to give you the ability to do like a, like a work session where you're less formal up here. Maybe I'll gather around a table and look at, I don't know, a land use map and really just sit there and have a very, you know, less formal conversation around a table. So this, I think this is intended to give you the opportunity to do so. Otherwise, the concern might be that you're locked into this formal process where the public always has the chance to ask questions, which they don't really always have the chance to ask questions anyway at a, at a certain point after, if not marked, but...
Does it look like it's redundant, though, to number five, which is called study sessions?
You know, maybe you just change it to, change that three G to, the planning commission, let me just read the language, planning commission may hold study sessions per section five A, per section five, I don't know. Would that solve the problem?
I would take it out still. We leave five in, we, I would take out three G.
Yeah, I think you're right. If you leave five A in there, three G is not really necessary.
Agreed. Three I, this was just a question. It's not a bad idea, but I didn't think it should be a rule necessarily.
It's not uncommon. At my previous jurisdiction, the city council had a nine o'clock rule, and if they wanted to go past nine o'clock, they had to ask for a vote to continue the meeting. So it's not uncommon. You don't have to have it, though.
We're, we're taking, we're taking ideas. Eight o'clock is sounding even better.
Keep in mind we're in Anticordis.
Do you want to leave this in? Do you want to make it a rule? So you have to vote if it's after nine o'clock? Unless dinner's being brought in.
Is anything open at nine to bring us dinner?
Probably not here. Okay, we're leaving a nine o'clock rule in. Four B.
I think we ought to refer to, defer to Libby. Has there a meeting ever gone past nine o'clock? Oh, really? For planning commission?
Oh, yeah.
That must have been interesting.
And I bet it was during the comp plan.
Four B. The agenda may be divided into sections and continue until subsequent meetings, when it is apparent that one meeting will not be sufficient to complete the scheduled business. I say take it out. Go ahead, Mr. Coleman.
I think the intent is to allow you to, if there's something big on the agenda, you can just say, you know, "This is too much. Let's just take part of it and continue there." It just gives you an option to only take part of a bigger issue.
Isn't that what we just did just now? Without the procedure?
Yeah. This formally gives you, I think, the intent. Whether or not it's entirely necessary, I honestly don't know.
It doesn't, it doesn't hurt to have that in there, does it?
Yes. More words. More rules, more words.
But it gives you leeway if you have a contentious meeting where you're obviously not going to get to the, you're not going to get to the whole agenda.
You still have that leeway. You've not given that leeway away.
But that gives you, that gives you something in black and white that you can point to. And, and it gives you leeway.
You have Robert's Rules of Order in black and white that you can point to.
Okay, okay, but I mean, it doesn't, those three sentences, they are not going to, not going to make or break the rules.
It's one sentence.
Okay. So you're making my point for me. It's, it's, it's not going to hurt it to leave it in there.
All right. Mr. McColl wants to leave it in. What about the rest of you?
I made it a policy to always vote against Mr. McCombs, so it's easy.
You know, I've been here for contentious meetings, though, where the public wasn't very happy because the decision wasn't made, because it was running long, where the decision was made that we're going to continue this to the next meeting. And they were, they were grumbling because they wanted an answer, and it wasn't going to, and it probably wasn't going to be the one that was going to come down from here anyway. So they just thought that the planning commission was passing the buck and not giving them what they wanted, which was an answer. So having it in there, we can point to that and go, "We reserve the right to continue this conversation."
Okay, it sounds like two to two so far.
I, I would keep it in there.
Three to two. Four to two. Okay, we're leaving it in. All right, study session is, we're leaving that in now, right?
Yes.
Because we took the other thing out.
Yep.
Okay? You know, oh, last page. The planning commission at a regularly scheduled meeting may amend these rules of procedure by a motion and a consensus. Do we need the words "and a consensus"?
Yeah.
We have one yes and one no. When you make a motion, they can amend the rules, we can amend the rules, by a motion and a consensus. Would that mean no motion, just a consensus? I think it muddies it. A motion infers a vote. A consensus does not infer a vote. Say that again.
Killing the consensus would do that because a motion is acted on.
Correct.
I just voted against you.
So take out the word and a cons, or the words "and a consensus." Okay. Mr. Dretzky?
Well, again, if somebody could make a motion, but I think it's important that we vote on it, that there be a record of a vote.
So should we say a motion and a vote? By, procedure by a vote?
That'd be fine with me.
The curator?
I'm fine with that.
Everybody fine?
To me, it's the same thing, but...
I think we're splitting hairs, but...
Okay. By procedure by a vote? Or a motion and a vote? Other, the other things that I had in here, besides the quorum, and the main thing was the, the role or the mission statement, the other thing is just cleaning up a little bit of language. There was some duplication in an area that I just took out the duplicate, and then I made chairperson, chair, instead of chairperson and vice-chairperson, I just made them vice-chair. Yeah.
Are you trying to narrow this down to less pages?
I, I like the seven pages. I was very happy to see that. So next meeting, or whenever we get together, I'm, if we are getting together on the 12th, I won't be here. So next meeting, we will hash out mission statement or roles, and I think we've pretty much got everything else, unless, if you see something else that you want to change or make different, let us know. Yeah.
Couple of comments that may result in a change. On the public comment, six B, the public comment period is for comments not related to items on the meeting's agenda. City council has wrestled with this in the last few months, and I've noticed that the mayor, and I don't know if it's been codified or just in his statements, that the public comment needs to be related to city mission or the planning commission's mission. He was having public speakers coming up and talking about subjects that were totally unrelated, in the opinion of the council, to the business of Anticordis. And so I wonder if we should consider following that lead to protect ourselves against people speaking on anything that they want to speak on, rather, rather than focused on what's relevant to the city of Anticordis. And then similarly, in seven H, there will be no cross-examination, cross-examination of speakers. Is, do we want to think about that? And the bigger question is, when it comes to people making public comments, do we want to engage in trying to answer them? Do we want to engage in anything beyond clarifying questions? I mean, I'm concerned that we open ourselves up for debate.
So that's...
That's two substantial ones that I think we need to think about.
Okay, so let's go back to the six, which one was it?
B, isn't bigger.
Six B. The public comment period is for comments not related to that meeting, to items on that meeting's agenda. I think that one's fine the way it is. What do the rest of you think?
You know, I would, I would, you know, maybe when we start the meeting, to give that opportunity for anything that's not on our current agenda, if there is, you know, new, new, whatever, Lord, I'm tired. New items that they're bringing up.
It's not nine o'clock.
Yes. Yeah, and so, yeah, any new, any new topics. If they're bringing a new topic that's not related for that evening, then give them a minute to bring that up, if they have something cool. And then at that point, maybe we might be able to go like...
Can you be at the mic, please?
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
I'm sorry about that.
So, so you're saying this is good because it lets people come and say their mind. Mr. Mills is saying maybe we should add something that they can speak their mind, but it still needs to be related to city business.
I've been paying attention to what's going on at city council, and they've put in some barriers or constraints around that. I don't know if they codified it or if it's just in the mayor's statements. It has not been a problem for the planning commission. I just thought that we might want to follow that lead that the mayor and the city council have been doing to protect us against people coming in and talking about the war in Palestine or something, you know, things that are totally irrelevant to our city.
Do you have some wording suggestions?
My wording suggestion would be to utilize the language that the city council and mayor uses.
I don't have it. Anybody?
Oh, I just referred to it.
All right. We'll think about and try and work on this one. And the second one was seven...
Seven H, having to do with dialogue back and forth with people speaking in the public comment period.
So having facilitated many boards in the past and teaching boards, I always have taught them never to engage back and forth in, with the speakers. Mr. Coleman, do you want to weigh in on that?
It is a public comment period is the opportunity for the public to submit comments. It is not a public question and answer period.
I'm seeing heads shaking. Does that mean leave it the way it is? Mr. Mills, are you okay with that?
I'm, I'm okay with it. I just wanted to emphasize it.
Yeah, oh, okay.
I mean, it always leaves the option, and I've seen it in practice in, in other cities, where it's, the analogy would be the park closes at nine a.m. or 9:00 p.m. every night. But people are in the park behaving well. The police aren't going to do anything about it, but it gives a tool in their toolkit to enforce civil well-being. This, I don't think we need to write it in there, but it would always be at the chairman's discretion to engage in some manner, but it's a... But it's a, be a slippery slope. So I like the bluntness of what's written there.
Okay. Mr. Dzdeski?
Well, I like the fact that it seems like we, we offer the comment up to three minutes. So I mean, and when the three minutes is up, thank you very much. You know, that, that'll, that'll, that's going to be a very short debate. Thank you. We cut them off at three minutes.
All right.
And avoid the debate.
Chairman, may I add something?
Yes.
You know, if somebody does ask a question, you know, while you're having your discussion later, I mean, it's not inappropriate for you to try to address that question? Or if you don't know, you know, maybe ask staff, like, if, if you're really curious and you're like, oh, wow, that's a really important question. It's not inappropriate for you to continue, continue your discussion, but it's important that you don't engage back and forth. You don't want it turning into a, you know, a Twitter war.
Good point. All right. I'm feeling like we're pretty close already. And I think we have one main issue that we need to talk through. I've, I'm comfortable in rewriting mine with, with the changes that we've agreed. And did we, oh, wait, did we agree about the chair versus chairperson? That's fine. And did we agree about adding the section for a quorum? Okay, so then I think we're just down to really one, one main thing. And then we might actually have some procedures. Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
Did you say that you will, you are not available? So one of the important things of this is we can only vote on it if all of the members are available. So if nobody's avail, if one of the planning commissioners are not available on the 12th, we will not have a tw, a meeting on the 12th. And we might be better inclined to include this on, you know, the next agenda, next schedule, next time we have something else scheduled. So it sounds like we've made a lot of progress, too. So maybe we
Yeah.
have less discussion next time than we anticipated.
Yes, I, I am not available. I will be on a plane on the 12th.
We can have a motion and a consensus, or a motion and a vote, or whatever we're to do.
All right. We have, I think, one more piece of business now that I can't even find it. There it is. Under planning department update, I know, Mr. Coleman, you've already given us that. But do you want to say anything about the June 5th meeting?
Sure. For those of you following along with the comprehensive plan, which I hope you are all signed up for the notify me, I think we've, I think we've, we've signed all of the planning commissioners up for the comprehensive plan notices. So be sure to check your city email regularly. And including, you know, tomorrow, you should have something in there asking, you know, to confirm to sign up to, for an email, let's serve. We signed you up for that, so you should look for that. On June 5th, we're having a, the planning, the 2025 comprehensive plan kickoff. So we've already given information to the, you know, a lot of information to the planning commission. But in the meantime, we've also been trying to get the word out about what's going on with the, the comprehensive plan update. 2025 comprehensive plan update, which we haven't been using the term Planet Cordis 2045 much, but we're still kind of, that's, that's like our, our, our catchphrase, Planet Cordis 2045. We're having our consultants from Makers at a public open house in this room, 6:00, June 5th. It is not a planning commission meeting, but the planning commission is encouraged to be there. And we've posted, we will post notice that the planning commission may be a quorum in there if we need to actually post that. But we're anticipating that the city, there'll be a city council quorum there. It will be, you know, posters set up, informational tables and boards. And then at 6:30, there will be a more formal presentation from our consultants talking about the whole comp plan process with a, a little extra heavy lean on the, the, the new climate element that we're required to, to do. And so it may be a little bit repetitive for you, but actually it'll probably fill in a lot of gaps, too. And so encourage the planning commission to go. We've been getting the word out on this meeting as best as we can.
So a question about how that's, just the details about it. So you'll have boards set up. How will people be able to give their input?
We're leaving that up to the, to the consultants to be taking the feedback down. We intend to have a survey out before that date. And so we'll be, so many, we hope to be able to have that done and have that survey available at that meeting. And we're trying to figure out how to broadly disseminate that, that survey also. So the survey will be one means for people to provide feedback.
Partly, the reason that I'm asking is I heard council for sure wanted significant input. And you've mentioned numerous times that we really do want significant input. Just thinking if there would be some way, whether it's, I don't know, on, I don't know if the city has iPads, that they could do a survey, if they could separate it by the different elements, maybe. If they don't have iPads, maybe just even paper comments. But people need some, they can't just come in, I don't think, they can't just come in cold and expect that they're going to have some good input. Yes, the presentation would gender some questions, maybe. But it sure would be good to think through that process really well. And if there's swag for Planet Cordis, this would be the time to have it. Would be really good to have it ready to go.
We're, we're trying. That's, that's a harder, harder task than we anticipated, but we're working on it.
Well, and I would be happy to help with that. That's, this is in my realm.
All right. You volunteered, we heard it.
I did.
So we anticipate it would probably be paper available for people, the surveys. This is the first of three open houses. This one is to shape the plan. Is that the phase that we're at? So it's, it's early. You know, we're not anticipating people are going to be able to have, you know, find, like, very specific comments at this point as far as what they'd like to see in the climate element, because they're just learning what the climate element is. But, so we're expecting, at this point, more general comments as we're, you know, shaping like how we're going to go about updating our various elements and creating the, the new climate element. And then we'll have a, another workshop after we've got some really good ideas where we're starting to create the new policies and goals and get feedback from people then. And then a, a third workshop, once we're closer to a final draft, where people can comment on the final draft and, and have, you know, opportunity to comment and provide feedback at, at that point. So it's, these are the three main times for people to really be in an informal way interact with the consultants.
More likely at this meeting, you're going to have questions rather than comments. And so figuring out some way to capture those and maybe even shape them, you're going to do that with a survey partly, but there's other ways that that can be done. And I think by element would be one of the ways to do it anyway. We don't need to keep everybody here talking about this. Is there any other business for the good of the order? Not, the meeting is now adjourned.